I love that we're able to shape our communities to be what we want them to be on a local level. You can't control everything that's going on across this, this country and even at the state level. But when it comes to local government, you know, we have that option to make our communities what we want. And that's what I love about it. And that's why I'm running.
Let's talk about creating a life and country we're proud of together. I'm your host, Alvin Navascas. Welcome to Alvin and the Talks Shift. So this is an exciting connection. Julie and I have been in each other's orbit for a couple of years. I feel like I reached out to you on some advocacy issues a couple of years ago, but we haven't connected since. And I've always wanted to know you because I've always heard such great things about you. So welcome to Alvin and the Talks Shift, Julie Mulaga.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for being here and I'm really just happy to chat with you. So I'm excited.
So you are running for office right now?
I am. Yes, I am running for Adams County Commissioner in District One. So I'll be on the ballot this. Well, I have a primary here in June, so yeah, it's coming up pretty quick.
Tell me a little bit about yourself, your background, where you grew up. Are you native to Colorado? And how did you end up running for office?
Well, yeah, that's a long story. I was born and raised right here in Adams County. So I grew up in South Thornton. I was, um, my house was off of like 84th and Welby, um, which is technically unincorporated Adams. But I, I went to Skyview High School. Um, so I am from Thornton, raised here my whole life. I ended up buying my first house out in North Glenn, um, is when we were able to, to find a spot that worked, um, for us. And that's how I kind of stumbled into, um, the Northland City Council eventually. So, um, I ran for office honestly because I, I, I got sucked in via a stakeholder group. Northland was building a new rec center at the time and I had, um, a couple of little kids. And, you know, any mom who's, who, who has young kids is always looking for places to play. And so when they called for, you know, neighborhood folks to come out and, and talk about what do we see as a vision for the rec center? I was like, well, you know, I need an indoor playground. I need great programming for young kids. I need a place to have a birthday party. Like, so all of these things that like I had to challenge with every, every single year and, and every season. I'm like, this is what I want my rec center to be. Anyway, so that process really just kind of helped me, um, understand, um, local government more, um, and really just get involved in, um, in kind of the decision-making process of my community. And after that point, I, I was really, I was hooked. Um, and so I ran for office. I won. In 2017 was my first race. Um, I served, you know, that term and then ran again. And so we ended up having to move out of Northland. Our kids, you know, got big. Three kids later, um, life happens. And, uh, so we live in Thornton now, but we're, um, but now I'm running for Adams County Commissioner. Mainly because I love that local government aspect. Um, I love that we're able to shape our communities to be what we want them to be on a local level. Um, you can't control everything that's going on across this, this country. And even at the state level, but when it comes to local government, you know, we have that option to make our communities what we want. And that's what I love about it. And that's why I'm running.
So I, first of all, love Thornton and North Glenn because I used to hang out at the mall. North Valley and Thornton, you, like, they had an indoor water fountain, which was like awesome. They had the best ice cream store. And, um, I actually bought my first bra at the Sears there with my mom. We went to go see Joe versus the volcano and then went, um, to the mall and like, I think it's time that we go get your bra. And I remember being like, oh my God. So I do miss the mall lifestyle.
Yeah. And I mean, I think that that's what's so beautiful about our community is just, you know, it's the, the history. You know, there's families have been here for generations. Like, we have a lot of that, you know, really rooted community. But we also have a lot of growth too, which is exciting. You know, we've been able to bring in, you know, great new, you know, businesses. And, you know, people are like entrepreneurs or, or coming to Adams County. So it's just an exciting time, I guess, to kind of be from here, see the, the, the history. But also just be excited about the future too. So it's a lot.
So how did your parents and your family respond when you were talking to them about running for office? I know what my, what my parents would say. So I'm curious what they said to you.
So I think it, every family is different, right? So I'll start with that aspect. My family, like, we, we've always been, you know, strong voters. You know, that was something that was always ingrained in me. Like you have to engage, you have to vote. Like, I don't think my mom and dad ever missed an election. Like, it was something that was just always really important to them. Now, actually running for office. My dad, when I told him this, um, he's like, well, why would you want to go do that? And, and he's like, and, and as I'm going through this, my parents are like, are you sure? Are you sure you want to do this? I think it's the idea of, you know, putting yourself out there is really hard. You know, not only for the individual, but also for parents, right? Like, you don't want to see, you know, your kid get, you know, attacked. Which is common in politics these days, but it's, it's just kind of a, a piece of the, of the equation. So my parents, I think, were just really confused. Um, I think even to this day, they don't really understand. What I do or, you know, what, what I did while I was serving, you know, why are you on all these boards? Like, and, and I mean, you don't get paid a lot. So it's like, why are you investing all of this? Yeah, time and energy and, you know, and, and I have a family, right? So three kids and, you know, he's like, well, that's a lot of time. Are you, are you sure you're okay with that? And so, I mean, they were cautiously supportive. Of course, they're going to be like, yes, I don't understand why you want to do this. But go do it and be great. Um, but they, they definitely were not the, the most, I don't know, eager, I guess.
So let's talk about that because running for, first of all, Adams, as you said, is very, there's a lot of legacy. Folks that have been there for generations. There's a lot of new people. There's a lot of industry that's influencing politics in the space. So when you run for office, man or woman, or, you know, whatever gender you identify, you're gonna get attacks. But what you're experiencing is not different from what other women experience. And honestly, I was having this conversation in the office yesterday about reporters and women who are on TV and women who are just out there presenting, I mean, even just hanging out at the grocery store and how we're treated. What is your experience running as a woman, as a Latina, which is, you know, another element to add to the story? And then I imagine there's probably folks that are like, well, who's taking care of your kids? If you're out here in city council meetings and county commissioner meetings and all these events? What, how do you, first, what's your experience? And then how do you deal with that?
Yeah, that's, uh, there's so much there. Um, so let's just start with what my experience has been. So when I first ran for office, one of the things I noticed was, you know, I got elected. You know, my community, for the most part, was really encouraged to see a younger person running. And especially, you know, somebody who has young kids, you get the questions. It's, it's kind of sad that I prepare myself for these situations where I'm either on the doors or maybe I'm, you know, in a meeting or, or, you know, some type of gathering at some point. And we start talking about my campaign or we start talking about me serving and people are like, oh, well, who watches your kids? And I'm like, well, I, I do have a husband, right? He's, he helped me make these babies. He could help me take care of them too. It's, it's totally okay to do that. You know, and, uh, and I, I actually have been really blessed. Um, you know, both sides of our family are here. And so I have tons of support. Like I have a village, right? So like, yeah, my village helps me, you know, manage my kids and my life. And they allow me the opportunity to go and chase my dreams. And that's a huge blessing. I know that not everybody has. But to assume right off the bat that, hey, you have three kids, why aren't you home with them? I think that those conversations, they're hard to manage. I try and, and respond, you know, with a joke or like gracefully and just like, you know, I just have lots of support and I'm really lucky and na, 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 na. But, you know, at the end of the day, I think it gets really hard. Um, that's one of the aspects I didn't anticipate going in is, you know, you have to open yourself up to criticism. That's part of kind of running and putting yourself out there, right? But, you know, at the end of the day, you are still just a person. Um, and you are like a mom. And like every mom, you know, I struggle with mom guilt, just like everybody else. And so I think that that's been
Yeah, that was my next question.
I think that's, that's the biggest thing is how do I not take this personally? How do I like, understand that, like, the way that people are saying this, like, they're not, maybe they are attacking me, but I can't let them. I, I can't let them get in my head, you know, if that's the best way of doing it. Because, you know, I, I know I'm a great mom and I know that I'm providing my kids with a very unique experience. And so, I don't know, I think it's, it's hard to want to just, you know, be, be graceful about the response, but really you just get upset too. It's like, are you, are you seriously asking me this? Like, I want to talk about policy. Like, I want to talk about, you know, the future of Adams County. And you want to talk about who's babysitting my kids? Like, seriously? So that's, it's difficult, I'll be honest. And, and I was hoping that over time, that that would just dissipate. You know, even, you know, this is now my third election. Um, but it's, it doesn't stop. It keeps coming. It comes from older folks. Um, it comes from younger folks. It comes from women who are like my age. And, you know, um, they're, they have kids or they don't have kids. But it's, it's always this constant scrutiny that I have to manage. Even though, like, you know, other, other candidates have kids too, you know, other men have, men have kids. They, they have kids too, but they don't have to deal with that kind of level. So that's, yeah, it, it, it's definitely difficult. When you come to the Latina side of things, I think it actually gets harder. Um, you know, I, I, uh, I, I grew up in a strong Hispanic household, just like everybody else. You know, my grandparents, my grandmothers had, you know, one had nine kids, one had seven kids. Like, family is important, right? And so, like, I always knew I was going to have a family. It was something that was, you know, it, it was gonna happen. So I feel like that scrutiny gets maybe even a little harder. When, when you're coming from, you know, my type of background, uh, because, you know, folks who are part of your culture are like, well, why wouldn't you just focus more on your kids? Like, your kids need you. Um, like I do. I, I know my kids need me and, and I am there for them. So I think it's just this idea that you could do both at the same time. Um, and honestly, what's been modeled before? You know, how many, how many women mayors have we had? Like, we, we have a lot now. But when I started in 2017, there was, there were very, very few Latinas at all serving in Adams County. I think it was just Lynn Baca in Brighton at the time. I mean, like, when I go into rooms, especially when I was serving, I was used to the fact that I was surrounded by an entirely white audience, mostly male. I mean, that's, that's the reality of our politics. I, I, it's great that it's changing and we're seeing more diversity coming in, especially at the local level. But it, it definitely was shocking for me. I, I guess I just always assumed that there would be more folks like me serving, but there isn't. So we need more. And I think that that's, um, that's something I'm really excited about trying to, to help push to. We just need more diversity at all levels. It's important.
What, I think what's challenging is we already have that guilt. And then other people pile on externally. So it's like, you're battling yourself and you're battling the external judgments that we face when we're trying to lead, like, you know, a big career or make big life changes because we already carry that guilt. But like realistically, I'm like, I cannot be with my two-year-old for 12 hours a day. Like, the weekends are really hard to keep him entertained.
And my kids are in school and so, well, my youngest is still in preschool. So, you know, I, I, she's only half-day. So I still have to go and, you know, grab her and then I, I'm with her most of the day. But the, the older ones, I'm like, I, I'm worried about the summer. I'm like, you guys are gonna be with me all day? Like, let's try and find some plans, stuff to do. I mean, I love my kids. Um, and they're, they're fantastic. And they just keep me cracking, like laughing and they, they give me the life I need and energy to move forward, but it's tough. And especially when they're younger, it's a lot of hard work. So, yeah, we don't need extra guilt because trust me, I carry enough of it. And I put it on myself all the time.
I think what's interesting about your experience is you've seen your husband run for office compared to what the experience is like you. And so those differences are so relevant in your life. Like, you can run for office and your husband's not running for office and you're having this experience and you think, oh, it's in a vacuum. It's because I'm running for office. What are the differences that you see from when he runs and when you're running?
Honestly, it's, it's completely night and day. And there's a couple of different things, I think, that play, play into this, right? One, he is a man. Um, man, men are never asked, you know, you know, where, what, who's watching your kids? Like, that's just not really something that he's, he has never, ever gotten that question ever. Ever since he started running and serving as well. Like, that has never, he, he was actually shocked when I first got it. I'm like, well, Kyle, of course, like, you're a man. Like, this is the way the world works. Like, everyone perceives us through two different lenses, right? And on top of that, we also have a racial difference. So, you know, Kyle's white, I am brown. Does that make, um, differences as well when we go and knock on doors? I mean, I think it's just, it, when we think of, what, it's 2024, right? And we're still battling these same stereotypes that women have been battling forever. And it, it kind of makes me feel a little just disappointed, um, that we're still in this space. And it makes me worried, you know, my girls, especially my oldest, very ambitious. She's 10, going on 30. You know, she's gonna be the next president. Like, she's, she's, she's an amazing young woman already. But she, she's gonna have to battle the same. Like, I, I guess I just, it's tough because I don't see an end in it. And I don't know what that looks like. Cause if we can't figure it out, then, I don't know. Can the next group? I don't, how long is this gonna last before, you know, women actually have that true equality?
I know. It is hard to think about, things have changed so much and I've talked about this in another podcast. And yet, there's so much more to go. There's so much more to do. I mean, we're barely at the point where we're not getting sexually harassed at work. And we just got here about what, 10 years ago?
So, yeah, and we still have just so much, so much more room to go and, and move forward. And, and really be the kind of society I, I think a lot of us think we're in today, but we're not. You know, we have a lot, we have a lot of work to do. And it starts with us, right? And it starts with each of us, um, women included.
How do you talk to your kids about running for office? I'm sure that they see what's going on, how it impacts you. You know, it, it changes your mood when you're like dealing with stuff on your phone and like people are bugging you. How do you, just like, how do you talk to your kids about that?
When my husband first ran for office, our daughter was two months old. So it's always been kind of part of their life. So my oldest was two months old. So being in politics, running, running campaigns, it's always been kind of part of who they are. So they get to see that backside. But they also get to see the stress of it. So I think, um, you know, when it's a hard time, when, you know, something bad happens, they are my biggest cheerleaders, honestly. They, they are like, you could do this, mom. I believe in you. So they, they understand, they see the ups and the downs of the whole thing. Um, you know, they have questions. We talk about policy sometimes, um, as it comes forward. Or, or I ask them questions about, you know, this is the, the problem that, you know, this community is facing. What do you think is the best solution? So, I mean, it, it gives them that great kind of interaction of like, you know, being a problem solver, thinking about big community issues, you know, what kind of changes would like, they like to see. So we have those types of conversations. We have how do you manage stress types of conversations? How do you juggle, um, things? So they see me being a mom, running to a call because I'm also working. So, you know, I'm, I'm doing work, I'm meeting with people. So they, they just see, they get to see all of the beauty and all of the pain, I guess. So it's, for the most part, they, they are just the biggest cheerleaders I have. They, I have a theme song, um, that is helping me get through this campaign that I'm currently in. It's the Carrie Underwood Champion. Um, and when it's, it's a bad day, my daughter turns on the song and she's like, let's just listen to this on repeat for a while, mom. It's gonna be okay.
How do you carve out time for yourself?
Time for myself? You know what? I think time for myself, when I think about like, what do I really need? You know, what makes me like, just feel complete? Um, and it's, it's maybe, I don't know. I don't think it's weird. I'm a mom. So you can't think anything is weird. But I, I love just sitting down and like just relaxing with the kids. We're big movie people. So we have family movie nights and my best moments are when I'm sitting there on the couch and I have these three kids piled on me and I'm done. Like, that is what I need. You know, I, i- it's kind of a, an amazing opportunity because I'm able to, you know, be a mom, be there to support my kids, but I'm able to pursue my own passions, things that like light me up, right? Um, that make, like, light that fire in me. Um, and just by doing this work. Like, I love talking about, you know, ways that we can make our community better. I love the details. I love the policy. I love just kind of hashing that out and brainstorming with all of the different folks I get to meet during the campaign. So, I mean, that alone fills my bucket. And then when I'm sitting there with my kids, that fills my bucket. And then other than that, I enjoy sleeping like anybody else. Mom just needs a good night's sleep, guys. All right, dad's doing bedtime. I'm out. Peace.
I haven't successfully gotten that yet, but, you know, you gotta have hope.
Gotta have hope. So you gotta have hope.
So when you were going through this process of running for office, what are the things that you had to consider? And, um, what were the, like, what was your pro-con list? And what was the final decision that made you take the leap?
No, that's a great question. Whenever you're running for office, you know, and obviously it's gonna vary by role. But, you know, you have to really just look at your calendar. You have to be like, do I have time to commit to this? Can I actually pull this off without going insane or feel like, you know, I'm, I'm just, you know, not able to keep up with, with everything that's on my plate? So looking at that calendar, trying to figure out, you know, okay, well, when am I gonna knock doors? Like, for me, it's not just like, okay, well, I could go after work. It's who's doing kid pickup? Who's taking, you know, some of the swimming and gymnastics? And so it's all of these variables that come into play. And that's when you have to just really be realistic about, where's my village? Who's carpooling? What moms can I lean on for help? You know? Where's, you know, where are the grandmas at? I have a grandma army, which is fantastic. So it's like, come and help. You know, all of this little coordination pieces. So when I'm on the doors, that's what, that, you know, a handful of people who are coming together to help me even get there. Um, so coordination is important. That's what I always tell moms. I'm like, you have to, you have to be able to coordinate all of your schedules. And on top of that, I mean, I think it's, for me, you know, passion for the work is, is really the main driver. Um, and that typically throws me over on, as a huge pro and throws me into these races. But I, I think passion is a huge piece of that. The cons are, you know, they're real. You have to think about what does exposure to your kids mean? You know, we had situations, um, when Kyle was running bills back when he was in the house. Well, we had, um, state patrol parked outside our house for a week because people were making threats to our family. Like, when I served on the Tri-County Board of Health and I voted for masks, I was on a protest sign. They pulled pictures of my, you know, they pulled Facebook photos and stuff like that and put it on a protest sign and said, you know, and we're, we're putting that all over social media. So I mean, it's like a piece. It, it's, it's part of unfortunately, the process of it. And I think that that's what we talk to the kids about too, is, you know, these negative comments that people want to throw out and these negative, you know, images and stories that people want to put out to your family and about, you know, mom and dad, you know, that's, it, it's their opinions. Everyone is welcome to their opinions. Just because they disagree with you doesn't mean that they're bad people. But, you know, that's not the full story. Um, and so I think that that's just a really important lesson that we're always, you know, throwing our kids. It's like, just because somebody put up a negative ad doesn't mean it's true. So, um, because you know, you know, how we've been attacked in the past. So it's, it's a great perspective for them to kind of see both sides.
So win or lose? How do you deal with the next step? Because either you don't get through the primary and you have to grieve this process with the family or, you know, you win and you move on and it actually gets more intense than it is now. What is your, what are you thinking? What's your process for the next step?
I mean, for me, um, the loss is always gonna be tough, right? Especially after you've invested so much time and energy into the race. Um, and Adams County is a big race. So we run countywide. So that's huge. So reaching tons of voters, I spent a lot of time, um, you know, reaching out to, to voters, knocking doors, doing events like meet, meet and greets and stuff like that. So, I mean, it, it's a huge investment. So to lose, I mean, that's, it, it's definitely gonna hurt. I'm not gonna lie. So I think it's just part of, part of that process. But, I mean, it's, it is what it is. And that's the beauty of our democracy, right? You put yourself out there, you run the best campaign you can, you leave nothing on the table. And at the end of the day, you still could lose. That's, it's the way this process works. So I think if anything, it's, you know, work hard, do your best, you know, have no regrets. And then if it works out, great. And if not, then you know what? There are other things for you to pursue and other things to do and that's okay too. Um, so that's gonna be a good lesson for everybody. If I win and we move on, because then I'll be on the general, um, in November. Yeah, I think it's just more of that determination. This is a marathon, right? You have to keep at it. One day at a time, one week at a time, one month at a time. And just trying to, um, do everything you can to run the best campaign that you're able to run. Am I, am I the best candidate ever? Probably not. I'm sure there's other folks who, who think I should be doing other things or working harder or any of the above. But I'm doing the best I could do, um, and the best that I could do while managing everything else that I have going on. And I think at the end of the day, that's what's most important to me.
So one question I like to ask my guests is, when a mistake is made, whether being a mom, being a human, being a candidate, how do you recover from that? How do you get yourself back up? What do you tell yourself?
So I actually had one of those moments earlier today. Um, and I, I, I just tell myself, I, I try and put it into perspective, right? That's the first step of, you know, how big is this problem? How could I do better next time? And really, just you, you have to learn how to go with the flow. Figure out how to, um, take the next step forward. You know, is this gonna be the end of a situation, of a relationship? Or, you know, how significant is this error? Um, or is this something that'd be like, ask for forgiveness and try and move on? So, um, you know, really, I, I apologize to my kids a lot if I feel like I, I did something wrong. Or, hey, you know, I, I had to miss this event and I'm sorry. You know, I just want you to know that, like, I'm still really proud of you and I still really love you. Cause you know, that happens too. And it's like, this is just me trying to juggle everything. And if it's okay with you, you know, can I miss this event? Like, I, I feel like it's always communication with the kids of, you know, is, how do you feel too about the process? But yeah, I mean, it's, you have to just kind of take a deep breath, listen to your, um, Carrie Underwood theme song.
I think I should do an episode with folks and find out what their theme song is.
You should, honestly. Well, because it's like, because this isn't just like a, a, it, it's a mental game, right? Like, it's a mental, long-term game. And so like, you have to mentally just like pull yourself up, you know? There are bad days when it comes to fundraising, right? Bad calls, negative residents. There are bad days when it comes to fundraising, right? Bad calls, negative residents, you know, things come out of the woodworks. And you're like, wow, that one hurt, um, but, you know, you have to have methods of just kind of pulling yourself out of that. For me, it's deep songs, I don't know, and this campaign is all about that, that Carrie Underwood Champion theme song, and I literally have it on repeat most of the days. Just to kind of help push me forward, I'm like, I got this, I could do this.
Well, our time is up, it always goes really fast, and I appreciate you reaching out and, um, wanting to be a guest on our show. I guess everybody should know, if you all want to have an episode with Alvin and the Tuck Shift, I'm always open. Um, Charlene, who produces, knows that I'm always open, I pretty much let anybody who wants to be on be on, so. I appreciate you, Julie, thank you for, you know, doing all your work in the community and working really hard for, for your community, representing Thoran.
No, thank you for having me, and thanks for just kind of talking about this important issue, I think, you know, for me, it's. Women, we need more women running, kids or no kids, it doesn't matter, um, but those young moms that are, you know. Wanting to do more work in the community, it it's possible, I've done it, there's a whole handful of us who are doing it every single day. Um, and you really just have to find your, your group, and we need to be supporting, um, these moms and, and not, not tearing them down. Cause, you know, we do enough of that on our own, unfortunately, so, go moms.
Go moms, alright, thanks, Julie, thank you. Thank you for watching Alvin and the Tuck Shift, please like, share and subscribe, and as always, engage, empower, evolve. If you liked this episode, or if you want more content like this, go to alventoxshift.com, or wherever you listen to podcasts.